Good evening. I'm going to call the, first of all, there, from our closed session, there's nothing to report out. So I will reconvene into open session. And we will begin with the City Council Open Session Meeting of April the 17th. And if you will stand with me and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Applause). Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mary Williams.
Here.
Ms. Gervonta.
Here.
Now, Hopkins, who's passed the moment.
Mark Homer.
Here.
Doris Segreini.
Here.
City Clerk is here, Administrator Tim Miller.
Here.
Interim City Engineer George Pacilla.
Here.
Attorney General Arnold Stain here.
Here.
Administrative Services Director Jennifer Malway.
Here.
Fire Chief Amy Nguyen.
Here.
Interim Police Chief Michael Burton.
Here.
Community Development Director Rochelle Calwell.
Here.
Item C is approval of the agenda, excuse me. Item B is City Clerk's report on agenda posting.
At 11:45 a.m. on the 14th day of April 2016, the agenda for this meeting was posted outside the City Hall in Southern Hill.
And item C is approval of the agenda. Is there anything that needs to be changed or added or pulled by the council? And we will move on to presentations. The first presentation is item number one, which is the introduction of Police Officer Curtis Hankins.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, members of the council. My card and interim police chief. And tonight I get the opportunity to introduce to you and those at home and those in the audience, Sonora's newest police officer, Officer Curtis Hankins. Officer Hankins, come on up. This is Officer Hankins. He's married to his lovely wife Melanie, and they have four children, CJ, Autumn, Hunter, and Summer. He has 18 years of experience as a police officer. He's worked for the cities of Upland, San Bernardino, and Redlands, all in Southern California. He graduated from Rio Hondo Police Academy in 1998 and has attended Columbia Southern University. He has earned the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award seven times, two lifesaving awards, three meritorious awards, and numerous chief commendations. He's served as a field training officer, a firearms instructor, a TASER instructor, a force options simulator instructor, a less lethal weapons instructor, a crisis negotiator, and a background investigator. The only thing he hasn't done has been a police chief. You want to be a police chief?
Sure.
All right. But he recently moved to Sonora, a place where his wife was raised. He enjoys outdoor activities that include trail running and mountain biking. He likes to bowl, play softball. He's been a little league manager and a coach for more than 10 years. His biggest accomplishments in life are his wife and his children. Excellent priority, first and foremost. His favorite activity of all is spending time with his family. He attends Discover Life Church. He looks forward to serving the city of Sonora, and he hopes his experience will be an asset to the police department. And I can say that that's unequivocally going to happen because he has lots of experience, and we are honored to have him in the city of Sonora as a police officer. So it's a great addition to our department. Want to have your family come up?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Curtis, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Curtis Hankins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and...
Defend the Constitution.
Defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Officer Hankins.
Thank you.
Get him around.
Nice job.
If you'd like, would you like to say anything, Curtis?
Just appreciate the opportunity to come to the city of Sonora to serve, and hopefully, again, my experience will be an asset to the city. Look forward to serving the community.
Well, we're going to say thank you to your wife, who encouraged you probably tremendously to come back to Sonora, to come this way. So thank you very much for that, and I thank you for joining our team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number two is City of Sonora Employee Service Awards. And tonight, we're giving an award to Tyler Pichet, did I say that correctly? Fire Department, for 15 years. So Chief New. He doesn't look old enough to have been there for 15 years. Who, Tyler?
He doesn't look old enough.
Sure.
He still looks like a young guy. Well, he started out as a volunteer with the department, and, yeah. No, you still had to be 18 to start. So at 19, he started. But he's been an engineer with us for several years now. And I just want to thank him for coming tonight and his dedication to the department. You can always count on him whenever we have large incidents, and he's off duty to come in and staff up another engine and show the support for the city and the community. So, and hopefully, before I retire, he'll have some bugles on his collar and step up to captain's position. So we'll get him there sooner or later. But thank you for your dedication. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Those fire guys don't like to say too much in public, I guess. Okay, item number three is the Mayor's Award of Appreciation. And tonight, we're going to be giving an award to four different entities. And as I call your name, I'll do it in order. And if you'll come up and meet me at the podium. So the first one is Oak Valley Community Bank. And I think that everybody in this room noticed that there was a beautiful new building that was, that has been built at the south end of Washington Street at Restano. And the, for those of you who don't know, the reason we give this award is that the Vision Sonora Community Design Committee thought it would be really nice if we would say thank you when an entity, a building owner, or a building, a business owner, would do something that would upgrade the exterior of their buildings. Well, not only did Oak Valley Bank upgrade, they built a whole brand-new building. So the Vision Sonora Award of Excellence is presented in 2017 to Oak Valley Community Bank at 85 Model Way, but that's not the location where the new building is, for caring to improve the appearance of historic downtown Sonora. And we can't thank you enough. And more importantly, thank you for having your business here in our city.
Thank you.
So I'm going to present this to Lynn Wilson, who is the general manager of Oak Valley Bank. The next one is Clark Broadcasting, and that's Randolph Holder. Every quarter, we do four awards. And just so you all know, each of you can nominate a building within the footprint of Vision Sonora at any time that you'd like to, and we will take that under consideration for the next awards. So Randolph, now, I don't know why we have two different pieces of paper, but we were, but since you're so special, because you're so special. We have one that says Clark Broadcasting, then we have one that says H. Randolph Holder.
I'll take the frame.
I'm going to give them both. So here, you could do this. You could, you know, you could take that one for a while, and then you can put this one in for a while.
I can swap that one in.
Right. But we want to thank you also, Randolph, for the beautiful building that you created in downtown Sonora, and most recently, putting the awning up at the top of the building. And it looks like it's been repainted, and we thank you for caring enough to do that. So thank you so much.
It's our pleasure. Thank you very much.
And do we have a representative from the Red Church here this evening? Yes. We all know that the Red Church is an icon in the city of Sonora and has been since the 1800s. And every little bit that your congregation is able to do with that church is a benefit to the city of Sonora. So the committee wanted to make an award to the Red Church, and this is really and truly for the steeple, even though it doesn't say that. But you're continuing to care to improve our downtown historic area, and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
So we would like to give you that. And the last one is to Eric and Cynthia Hewitt. Are they here this evening? I don't see them. But the award is for the McCoy Tire location on Stockton Road, where they added a new building onto the, onto the property, and they upgraded their existing building and have improved the character and the, of Stockton Road. So we appreciate that, and will personally take this down to them. So it's real easy to say what should be done, or what someone should do to their building, but it's really, takes time and shouldn't take so much time to say thank you. So we thank everybody that takes the time, energy, and spends the dollar to improve our historic downtown area. Okay. Item E is public comment on non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda, that is, within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Is there anyone who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? Seeing none?
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see your head pop up.
It's crowded in here today. Well, I want to thank the public work staff. I saw Mr. Lego Marcino out there today in the pouring rain, attending to Snell Street, because Snell Street has eight bazillion potholes, so I think he was filling in at least a couple lakes that were hit. And then I would like to see an item on the agenda where we could talk about the alcoholic beverage control. We've had some people go on the radio saying we should be having wine for Second Saturday, and there's been some other things that we should have, like this blanket permit. And I think we need to have a discussion on what it requires to have that kind of permit and to serve alcohol at events in downtown Sonora. Because I've seen a couple of examples where people were doing it, and they had no permit. So perhaps we need to have a serious discussion about this, because Shirley Sono does an exceptional job, and I've always taken the lead from her on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. That could also be an agenda item for the merchants' meeting, for a discussion at that time, too. So I might want to add that. The next merchants' meeting is the last Wednesday of, the fourth Wednesday of the month at 9:00. Would that be more appropriate, to have it there to begin with, at the merchants' meeting before agendizing it at a council meeting, or?
At the council.
All right. Then we'll move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and would be voted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Items this evening are: One, approve the following meeting minutes. City Council Special Meeting, March 30th, 2017. City Council Closed Session Meeting of April 3rd, 2017. And City Council Open Session Meeting of April 3rd, 2017. Item number two is approval to pay invoices on previously budgeted expenses on April 18th, 2017. And item number three is approval of disbursements in the amount of $155,626 on April the 14th, 2017, for payroll, inclusive of employee salaries, employer and employee taxes, and retirement contributions, leave payouts, and miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions.
There's no, were there any corrections? I was going to make a motion. Go ahead.
I wanted to add that the, is that on? The, on the minutes, the addition from the public, Tyler Durden, is from the website ZeroHedge.com, for people, anybody interested.
Was, was that stated at the meeting?
No, it was just, it was given that it was just Tyler Durden regarding the effects of the marijuana legislation in the, the handout that was given in our minutes.
Okay. If he didn't address himself as, from a specific entity, then it doesn't need to go in the minutes.
Okay.
Just, in fact, he doesn't even have to state his name. But he did. So, so I'm not so sure. You were looking at that as a correction?
An addition for any, just for the public record, because it just says Tyler Durden, and he is the source.
But if he didn't, right. But if he didn't specify that, it doesn't need to go in.
Like he wasn't here, that was. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Written records.
It's the special, Mary Jane, it's the special meeting on marijuana. That's, you have this look on your face.
Then, then that should be added in, then, if he gave you that information, Mary Jane. Okay.
I'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. Second.
Any public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a vote. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
All right.
Then it passes three yeses and one abstention. Item G is a public, public hearing. Consideration to adopt Resolution Number 04-17-2017-A, approving the city of Sonora's Home Buyers Assistant Loan Program Guidelines. Ms. Calwell.
Thank you. So tonight, you guys have before you the proposed guidelines for the Home Buyers Assistance Program. As you are aware, but maybe not everybody in the public, we applied for a CDBG grant in 2016, and we were successful in obtaining the funds to reinstate our Home Buyers Assistance Loan Program. We had that program for many years. We did over 68 loans, but when the recession hit, the, these types of programs went away. There was no equity, there, people weren't selling. Also, low-income individuals really weren't able to get financing at that time. Well, things are turning around, and there are financing programs available again for people that are low-income. And so we did apply for the grant, and as I stated, we were successful. The guidelines before you, excuse me, meet the requirements of the program. It is a deferred loan of up to $100,000 for a low-income household. The interest rate is from 0% to 3%, and they are deferred for 30 years. So the idea behind these programs is they get financing through a commercial lender at a fixed rate. They make their monthly payments, and then, once their loan is paid off or close to paid off, they would refinance and pay the city back. We've been fortunate, we, through the recession, we only lost a handful of loans through bankruptcy, and we have quite a few that are still out, and people are enjoying homeownership because of the program, and we're glad to see it come back. Again, the guidelines are here, and we are, staff is recommending that you approve Resolution 04-17-2017-A, approving the city of Sonora's Home Buyers Assistant Loan Program. Upon approval, we'll submit for general clearance, and then we'll be able to start marketing and get the program out, and hopefully get some loans made. We anticipate being able to make up to five loans with the funds that we have available. And I am going to hand this to somebody here at the corner, and if they could pass it around, it's the sign-in sheet for the public hearing, and it's not mandatory, it's voluntary.
At this time, I will open the public hearing at 5:23. Is there anyone who would like to come to the podium and speak? Seeing none, I will call, I will close the public hearing at 5:23 and 1/2 seconds and bring it back to the council for any questions or comments for Ms. Calwell. The one question I'll have is that the interest rates under the guidelines is anywhere from 0% to 3%. And when we do a loan, those loans will come back to the council for approval. Is that correct?
No, they're approved through the Community Development Committee. That's the, that's the committee, that's the reviewing committee for the loan. They're not done at the council level.
And in what circumstance would we do a 0%?
It's clearly states in here, 0% is for those households that are less than 50% of medium income. Those that are above medium, that 50% threshold, then they're at 3%. And anybody above medium, don't, they don't qualify for the program. So, yeah, it's tied strictly to their income. So 0, 50% less, they automatically get a 0. So that's real clear, because we don't want to confuse people.
And we're ready to move forward with a, with these loans if it's approved?
We are ready to go, and we've had some contact from some real estate agents. So hopefully, people are out there and looking, and we can get some loans done, go back in and get some more money.
All right. On that note, I need a...
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve Resolution 04-17-2017-A. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Any other public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item H, unfinished business, which we have none this evening. Item I is new business. Item number one is consideration to approve the Tuolumne County Economic Development Authority, Authority, TCEDA, FY 2018 budget. And I think we'll start with the staff.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. You have in your packet the request from the Tuolumne County Economic Development Authority Director for their fiscal year 18 budget, which was considered by the, by their board and recommended for approval. Director Kope is here to review the budget with you. Let me review the staff's recommendation. I provided for the council some historical context to the organization and the expenses of the organization over the last seven or eight years. The increase in the budget this year is, is a reflection of a couple of different things. There's $45,000 less in revenue because of a program that's no longer being continued, and there's an increase, just a general increase in the budget of some $49,000 because of additional project or personnel costs. The, the amount of the city's contribution is about $15,000 over last year, followed on a slight increase from the prior year or over the last two-year period of about 23%. The concern that staff has, and has brought to the council's attention in our report, is the city's fiscal condition. We're probably going to end this year with a deficit. We're just now putting together our mid-year, I mean, our third-quarter budget analysis. We have insurance costs that are higher than projected. We'll have to use our reserves to make that balance out. Those costs will be in excess of probably $100,000. We'll take some, we'll take some recommendations to the finance committee to see what we can do to reduce those expenses by year-end. But more importantly, when we look at our forecasting, and the administrative services director provided you a five-year forecast that was also reviewed with the finance committee, and if anybody from the audience would like a copy, there's some extra copies up here. But the projections are that we're looking at a fiscal year 18 deficit of around $200,000 in our general fund. That's about a 4% deficit. Our revenues are remaining relatively constant. Our costs are increasing, and, and one of those factors is the retirement of the unfunded liability with PERS. Other costs are typically increasing. That'll include our health costs, our other insurance costs, and we have not reflected in, in these estimates, any settlement with our bargaining groups, which we'll be dealing with all of our bargaining groups this year. And like the county, we've taken on a comp and class study and anticipate there'll, there'll be a need for some adjustments out of that process. As we look forward over the next five years, mainly due to the increasing PERS costs, both for the ongoing payroll contributions for retirement, as well as the unfunded liability, five years out, we're looking at potentially a million-dollar deficit. So we've instructed, from an administrative staff standpoint, all of our departments to submit a status quo budget. No increases in, in personnel, no increases in programs, no increases in services or supplies. And even with that, with what we're estimating, we'll be, we'll be facing a deficit next year unless we make some reductions. So with that in mind, it's our, it's the staff's recommendation not to contribute anymore for fiscal year 18 than we contributed in fiscal year 17. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay. All right. Council members, questions for staff?
Not ready this time.
Okay, then I will have Executive Director Larry Kope come up.
Larry Kope, the CEO of the Tuolumne County Economic Development Authority. I'm here to present our budget, as we do every year at this time. And so I just thought I'd go through the process of the budget review real quick, and then I also wanted to address a couple other things that came out because of a news story in the Union Democrat on Friday, to make sure that the board has the information that they need, that I have from the budget. A couple things, as Mr. Miller has expressed, there are higher costs that we're dealing with. The primary effect that we're having is that after five years of managing the Central Sierra Economic Development District, we are no longer going to be making revenue off of that, for a couple reasons. One, it was eating up more of the time that we were dedicating to economic development. It had grown to a staggering 60% of our time for only receiving about $45,000 in income off of that. In addition to that, some changes on how EDA trades in or considers in kind time, that we were able to bid towards it for match. So with those two things, there was discussion at the Economic Development Authorities Board that we not continue to contract, and that was approved. Soon after that, we then also started talking about our budget and the pressures that we're having, just like the city and the county are having. We have personnel costs, we have insurance costs, we have all of those that are pushing at us every year. In addition to that, this budget does include, and I'll get into those specifics, our first time really spending any money on attraction. And so that is one thing that we'll be talking a little bit about tonight in tonight's budget. So if you turn to your budget page, you will see that one of the first line items, 469800, Central Sierra Contract Reserves and/or Reserve Funds, has been zeroed out from last year. In addition to that, we have ramped up partnership reimbursements, and so there's an opportunity to get some of our dollars back from other partnerships that we're in. One of the examples is the Innovation Lab. We have slightly changed things in the Innovation Lab, where now we're getting reimbursed for cost of that facility. in the Union Democrat on Friday to make sure that the board has the information that they need that I have from the budget. A couple of things, as Mr. Miller has expressed, there are higher costs that we're dealing with. The primary effect that we're having is that after five years of managing the Central Sierra Economic Development District, we are no longer going to be making revenue off of that for a couple reasons. One, it was eating up more of the time that we were dedicating to economic development. It had grown to a staggering 60% of our time for only receiving about $45,000 in income off of that. In addition to that, some changes on how EDA trades in or considers in kind time, that we were able to put towards it for match. So with those two things, there was discussion at the Economic Development Authorities Board that we not continue the contract, and that was approved. Soon after that, we then also started talking about our budget and the pressures that we're having, just like the city and the county are having. We have personnel costs, we have insurance costs, we have all of those that are pushing at us every year. In addition to that, this budget does include, and I'll get into those specifics, our first time really spending any money on attraction. And so that is one thing that we'll be talking a little bit about tonight in tonight's budget. So if you turn to your budget page, you will see that one of the first line items, 469800, Central Sierra Contract Reserves and/or Reserve Funds, has been zeroed out from last year. In addition to that, we have ramped up partnership reimbursements, and so there's an opportunity to get some of our dollars back from other partnerships that we're in. One of the examples is the Innovation Lab. We have slightly changed things in the Innovation Lab where now we're getting reimbursed for cost of that facility. One example would be is we have people who have actually rented out office space, membership office space, where they can use the Innovation Lab but also run their businesses out of. Right now, we have that as a third, third, and third, third schools, third nonprofits, and third businesses. And so with that, that generates some revenue that not only covers the cost of our expenditures that we do on the Innovation Lab, it also creates a little bit of a profit out of that particular area. And so that was something we rebooted in June of last year, and so you see that in the miscellaneous revenue reimbursements line item, which is 472311. As you go a little bit farther down, you'll notice that the regular salaries are actually pretty much the same. They decreased by $200. That's a better estimate of where we thought we would be at this year's salary in compared to last year's salary. So those have not increased. One of the areas that has changed is how PERS is going in. We have a new line item called PERS Fixed, which is 512109, which will cost $26,097. And then if you look at the next line item, which is our regular PERS line, which is 512110, that dollar amount has went from $37,000 down to $27,000. So the net between those two is approximately around $16,000 added cost. So you figure in first, the $45,000 of the cost being us leaving the contract, you add in that cost of $16,000. You go a little bit farther down, and we have added to the marketing. Our marketing fund for the entire economic development over the last five years, sorry, last seven years, has been approximately around $8,000 to $10,000 a year, which is really a drop in the bucket. In fact, comparison to the Tuolumne County Visitors Bureau marketing budget of $634,000, $10,000 is, is a rounding error. In addition to that, we have increased to $37,500 because it was the plan of the board through our work plan to go from taking those 60 hours dedicated on Central Sierra to dedicate those to attraction, bringing in more high-wage jobs to the community. So as those high-wage jobs come in, then hopefully we gain additional, one, we gain additional property tax, but also gain additional sales tax as those employees work in our community. The one below that, 526110, Professional Services, stays about the same as last year, but we've changed where those funds go. Part of those funds, we're going to help run the central, or the, run the Innovation Lab, as we have done in past years, having it staffed. In our new reboot, we removed that staff cost, but actually $10,000 of that $20,000 is a new program where we would send the Small Business Development Center out to each one of our downtowns. And we are working with them to do it anywhere between two to four times a year and, and visit with those businesses one-on-one, find out what their issues are, see what SBDC or SCORE can resolve. Also, those that can't be resolved are then put on my plate. The reason why we do this is right now, we have an existing business retention program, but that's really for the top 25 businesses. There's only so much Larry you can spread across all of those businesses. This would get us into a lot more of the downtowns where SBDC would be reaching out, and then if there was certain things that was beyond SBDC's or SCORE's expertise, then they would refer them to our office. So it's kind of an extension of our office at a very cost-effective measure of about $10,000. And so that would roll out this year, and they would be visiting all of the downtown businesses, not only in the city of Sonora, but around the community. Other than that, we've had a slight increase on rents and leases. That's just the normal adjustments that go up. And so that's the highlights, I would like to say, at least on this particular year's budget. I did want to bring up also our budget history. If you do look back to our original budget when we started up in 2009, it was really a skeleton budget. It was basically myself and a half-time administrator, or a half-time assistant, and trying to ramp up an, an office. So basically, it was me and a lot of shoe leather. Over time, we've expanded our programs. We have the Innovation Lab. We also have a Groveland office. We work together with the SBDC and SCORE a fair amount. We have supported a lot of their training activities, and in fact, training activities that they also partner with the city on, like the Sonora Business Expo or the Tuolumne County Business Week, or Business, Small Business Week. But this year, yes, is an increase because of all those things I've mentioned before. But if you do look at your fiscal year 15, 16, and 17, the city's match has pretty much, actually, in fact, if you go back to 14, was, if you look at 14, it was 84,300. Next year, in 15, it was 83,160, a slight decrease, and then a little bit of a jump to 87,261 in fiscal year 16, and then in 17, it was 87,261. And so this year would be that first major jump that we would have since the time we added a full-time staff member back in the 2010, 11 budget. With that, let me go past here a little bit. In your packet, you should also have a copy of our work plan. This year, we have a new work plan. We have simplified it, focusing on just four key areas. Before, we had a number of areas focused in different aspects, everything from workforce to infrastructure. All of those are still covered under this, but we have basically four main directions. And of course, those main directions follow what our purpose statement and our mission statement are. One is manage a business retention and expansion program, do a comprehensive business and attraction program, provide startup assistance for local businesses, and encourage workforce. Those are our four key points. And then there is a new action item, Action Item E, which really looks into long-term research and to provide long-term solutions, economic solutions to both the city and the county. So that's the part of the budget that I've kind of included in your packet. I have also got our 2017 annual report that I could also go through, also our project list that we're working on, number of projects that we have, how that influences the community. But the first thing I wanted to do before that was reference back to the news story that came out on Friday. And the key thing is, is I think one of it, one of the items have already been referenced here multiple times, was that one thing that the story didn't unfortunately cover was the $45,000 that we would lose from Central Sierra. You know, that changes the picture there a little bit when you're looking at the story. But also, there was a language, or there was a reference to this, Language in Agreement stated that the city and the county would provide base funding with additional funding coming from private parties, businesses, and organizations with interest in economic development and TCEDA services and programs. However, efforts to obtain funding from outside sources have been unsuccessful as far, and that's an untrue statement. In fact, one of the first dollar amounts we actually got, actually, I worked with George on, we had the old, that were not only under the EDC, but there were equivalent funds that were under the Sonora Area Foundation. We were able to tap into those, and all of those funds were dedicated towards business education. So if you remember, I used to report in front of you that we had the Business Alliance of Tuolumne County, which was SCORE, SBDC, and all the other business training partners working together. The money that put those classes on, the money that matched the federal funds to put those classes on, all came from the old EDC and also came from funds in SAF that belonged to the entity. And so you would see in our budget, in the 2011, '12 budget, $29,842. That was actually from an outside source. If you look at the fiscal year 2013, a couple different things is we started running the Central Sierra at that time. So our first payment from them was around $25,000. And then under miscellaneous revenues, under that year's budget, we had $18,000 coming in in miscellaneous grants. As we go forward, every year since 2000 and our fiscal year 13, we have received around $43,500 to $45,000 from the Central Sierra Economic Development District for putting those, or running the Economic Development District on a regional basis. So we have continually looked at outside sources. In addition to that, we have also partnered with a lot of our regional partners and our local, our local foundations to do a couple of things. First, let's talk about what our own board has done. We have been under budget every year since I've operated this entity. Now, in the first few years, that under budget actually was realized by both the city and the county, because we worked on a reimbursement basis. And so what would happen would be is if we didn't spend the money, we didn't bill Debbie Patista over at the Auditor and Controller's Office, we'd not bill both the city and the county. About, I believe around 2013, I believe it was, I don't have the date in front of me, we went and changed that process where we actually have an Economic Development Reserve Fund. We have a fund that basically, the city and county fund us fully, and then what we do is that if we have dollars left over through savings that we've done throughout the year, then it goes into that fund. We can tap into that fund for future projects like attraction programs and stuff like that. But we've also tapped into it to make our budget whole, so we don't come back and ask the city and the county for additional funding. So when, over the last five years that we've been under budget, we have been putting some of those funds into an economic development fund so that we can expand business and community assistance programs. Also, we've also pursued grants through other resources. We've received over $40,000 in grants, both from Sonora Area Foundation, PG&E, and many other grant partners that we've been with, including partners like Sierra Pacific Industries, where we've been able to receive a grant to do stuff not only within our organization, but also at the Innovation Lab. Also, as a region, under our Central Sierra Economic Development District, we've also wrote over $550,000 worth of grant. Co-wrote that with our partners. Of the first part, the $50,000 through USDA, that will be split between all four counties, but with the primary portion of that coming to Tuolumne County and the city of Sonora, focusing on business training. So of that $50,000 grant, 20 has been set aside just for Tuolumne County businesses. And again, that will be focused on small businesses, which tend to be the ones that populate our downtowns. In addition to that, there's over $500,000 grants that we've done in not only the Butte Fire Recovery Center, that is over in San Andreas, that just had its open house on Thursday, but also flooding and drought issues, and also value-added agriculture. So one of the grants we went for were actually helped businesses like Indigene and Green Dog Brewing and companies like that grow in our small community, because it will provide information, assistance, and stuff like that to grow their business. Let me see. I will say one area where we do try to keep our costs low, we do keep a majority of our design services in-house. We design with a few of the print companies around here, our own letterheads, our own brochures, stuff like that. But we also do our own website design and have for three to four different organizations. We also do office upkeep and maintenance and even updates to our offices. When we painted our offices, the organization picked up the paint, my wife and I did all the work. So what we try to do is we try to stretch, I guess the reason why I bring that up is we try to stretch every penny that we get as far as we can to get the best benefit that we can from that. And then other than that, I, I can get into the, the value proposition, if you would like, on the number of projects that are both in the city and the county. You know, if you look at what's been happening over probably the last eight years, return on investment, and this is a conservative estimate using numbers given by the companies, is about $10 million in projects in the city or 312 jobs. Projected projects, if we get every project that's on my worklist that we're working with, it's $61 million, almost $62 million in projects and 369 jobs. I did an estimate using some data that Debbie had given me, Debbie Patista, our auditor clerk, and on the property tax, it would be about $15,000 a year on the projects that I have already completed, and about $95,000 on projects that are in the projected, projected category. On sales tax information, unfortunately, I can't supply that because that is suppressed information. You know, I can do rough numbers from year to year that I can get from the state website, but unfortunately, we're not able to give you an estimate on that. So other than that, I just wanted to address, you know, that particular part of the article, because I don't think it really truly gave the full story. But other than that, the primary purpose I'm here for tonight is really just to present the budget. My board approved this budget seven to zero and forwarded it to you for your consideration. It has went to board of the supervisors, and the supervisors has approved their addition of $73,000 to the budget. And so it's now in front of you for your consideration. I'm up here for any questions.
Questions from the council?
Larry, the contributions from the city over the last several years, I didn't, I didn't get those. Could you go over them again?
Let me get to my main packet here. Oh, and then also, I have a retail announcement to do tonight. I just found out today that one of our companies have, has decided to locate in the city of Sonora. So let me pull this up here real quick. For fiscal year 14, $84,303. Fiscal year 15, $83,106. Fiscal year 16, $87,291. Fiscal year 17, $87,261. And fiscal year 18 proposed is $102,841. The announcement I have, and I'll mention it here before, I guess we started asking questions, is that we have just had a confirmation that Maurice's clothing store will actually be going into the former Hallmark store in Sanguinetti. And we've got a couple more projects that are working on behind the Panda Express, and so we're hoping to button those up here in the next few months. But some of them can go on for years, and others, you know, we can put together in just a few months. We've been actually been working with Maurice's and trying to promote that they come here for almost seven years, so.
Larry, could you relay to the council the decision that the Economic Development Authority Board made in regards to backing out of CSEDV and the fact that we're going to lose $45,000 at that point?
Yeah, that was, I'm, I think I can speak for the board members that sit on the city council. It was a hard decision. We knew that it was going to be a budgetary issue, but simply due to spreading the staff that you have, which is two individuals, really myself doing most of Central Sierra stuff, there was a long discussion about where the priorities should be and going back to what our mission and our, and our purpose is. And a lot of the discussion was something that had been missing is any kind of attraction. You know, we've been squeezing attraction in wherever we could, and it actually had even shrunk our business retention program. Now, lucky enough, a lot of the businesses that I work with know they can dial my phone number 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so maybe I didn't need as much time for the business retention side. But that area was slipping, and there, I believe, was a concern on that, and then that I've heard from board members, and then the concern that we really were not doing one of our key mission items, which was attracting new family wager while, well-paying jobs to the community, which hopefully will help all the economies, not only Tuolumne County, but the city of Sonora, because most people shop in the city of Sonora.
And what was the discussion in regards to reversing EDA for the $45,000 that we're going to reduce at that point?
Reversing EDA, I'm, I'm sorry, I have to keep my EDAs and TCDA's.
We knew we were going to lose the $45,000, so was there any discussion?
Oh, yeah, no, there was discussion on that it was going to be a very tough budget thing for both parties, both for the county and the city. I think I, we pretty much discussed that. I don't know if I'm missing anything else, but I think that was one of the key points, is that everyone knew it was going to be a tight and difficult budget year. But they all were committed that, you know, we are more on the revenue generation side than we were on the cost side, was the discussion. So I don't know if I'm missing anything that you thought in particular, so.
I just wanted to have the council view.
Yeah.
Other questions by the council for Mr. Cope?
Do I understand correctly that up until just this year, we were spending 60% of our time for the $45,000 in revenue?
That is correct, so.
Why?
Well, there was a couple of thoughts behind that. One, a lot of your shoppers also come from your surrounding counties, and if the economies in our surrounding areas are not doing well, there also are shoppers, there are workers. There was that, but there was also the thought of, is that all, water raises all boats, and so that it was good that if we worked with our partners and helped things in Calaveras County, because Calaveras County has not, they, they've had a minuscule economic development entity, really. They really haven't had any assistance. It was also to, one, keep the possibility of us being able to get infrastructure grants when... One thing that EDA can do is that if we have a project we're working with, and let's say we wanted to do a new shopping center, or we wanted to do a new industrial site, and there was a business that was going to create jobs at the end of that, we could actually go to EDA under that district, and EDA meaning the Economic Development Administration. We could go for a grant, and depending on how severe our economy was here, we could go for anywhere between a 50 and 75 percent grant, and we didn't want to lose that. So that was another key reason. The next part was to see whether we could build up economic development around us and training around us, because we had done a very successful Business Alliance of Tuolumne County training thing, and so we wanted to spread that into the counties around us. The next component was also that we already have a workforce area that covers that same particular area, and workforce is a key component to economic development. If you don't have the workers, it doesn't matter how hard you try to attract anyone, you're not going to be able to bring anyone here. So there was many layers of that, but one of the key things was really going in and trying to help this regionally, and then as time grew on, the amount of time that we had to commit to it increased exponentially. There was also some change at the EDA staff level that are more paperwork-focused than actually getting out and getting it done-focused. One of the biggest things that we talked about at the board meeting was, and I think we talked about it at the TCDA board meeting, but I definitely know we talked about it at the Central Sierra Economic Development District meeting, is that under EDA guidelines now is, Central Sierra is more about a planning and less about the implementation. And it's just not how you can do something in a rural area. You can plan all you want, if you never implement it, you never get anywhere. And so that was another one of the concerns about, you know, why do we, why do we just want to keep on planning and plan, and, you know, plans are worthless up on the shelf? So that was part of the consideration. I know definitely on the Central Sierra side, I can't remember back if we actually discussed that at the TCDA side, so.
Okay, well, is that then the explanation of why you mentioned working on the Butte Fire Recovery?
Yes, because...
Because in Calaveras County and...
Yep, that was a primary thing, and we worked, I called in some old friends of mine, basically CAL-ED, and CAL-ED normally does not get involved in local economic development. But lucky enough, they had a staff member who was born and raised in Calaveras County, and I knew that individual, Michelle Stevens, could hit the ground running there. So we partnered with CAL-ED and the Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce, and then they partnered with the county of Calaveras to really get their center set up there. And then since that time, the Workforce Center has actually partnered with them and moved the Workforce Center into that. So for the first time, Calaveras County has a fighting chance to at least have some kind of economic development activity over in San Andreas and the entire county. And that's part of that $250,000 grant we wrote, so.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Questions?
Larry, I've had the opportunity to work with you, it's the second time. I worked with you pretty extensively in my 2010-2014 tenure. And, you know, again, I always believe you've done an excellent job. I know about your balanced budget, I know how you tick, I know how you work, and we always got along really well. My only thing, and I'm putting this out here for our citizens in Sonora, is that, you know, the city's end of things is going up $15,000, and I have to be able to talk about that and address that. I get it, your board voted 7-0. I love working with the county. It's just hard for me to vote on, not because you're not doing a good job, you're doing a great job. I know that. But again, someone looking down, going, oh my gosh, you know, it went up $15,000 just for the city's end of things in one year, that's the hard pill for me to swallow. Getting the businesses in, I know Big Lots, PetSmart, let's name a few others, that we had giant holes somewhere in the city, and I know that you personally, working with you, I remember you pulling me aside and saying, hey, we've got this going on, we've got this. Could you, could you address some of those holes that you had specifically helped fill?
Well, the easy ones, the ones that are easiest to find, we're constantly working on downtown ones. Sometimes the downtown individuals come to us, sometimes they don't, sometimes we catch them afterwards. So at one point or another, either we catch them or we work with the SBDC to go down and catch them. When you're talking the bigger holes, I had some relationships with Joanne's Fabrics and, or, sorry, PetSmart and Big Lots, and the realtor who represented Joanne's Fabrics had, they were all looking for spaces up here, but they never thought about dividing the building up. So I got my people together with their people, and the realtor went off, and they figured out how to divide the building up, and then they all went back to their respective boards. So that would be three that we would have worked on right in our beginning. That filled the old Mervyn's location. The other one was Coles out in where the old God Chucks was. Coles was actually also looking at the Mervyn's location. So what we always try to do is when businesses come in, we don't see the city or county line. Basically, we say, what works for you, what do you need in a building? And then what we try to do is match them up with the best location. Once we hand them off to the building owner, though, it's up to them to do the final negotiations. We step out of that time. And then we come back in when it becomes time to be workforce, to do, if they need training dollars, if they need to work with PG&E for their energy savings, lighting program, numerous other programs, so. One of our most recent things we launched here was the Grow Tuolumne Fund, which, you know, if you remember how your CDBG funds work, is sometimes your CD, you only can do CDBG in the city, and you only can do it in the county, they can't kind of mix. Well, one advantage about, because you, at one time, the city had a revolving loan fund, I believe that went away from my knowledge. The county still has a revolving loan fund, but it's difficult to administrate because of all the rules with CDBG. This new loan that we've come in, the Grow Tuolumne Fund, is actually through the Fresno CDFI, which is a certified development financial institution. And so they can make loans anywhere. And so they've made loans to businesses in downtown, they've made loans to people in the, out in the county, and it's helped bring capital in where maybe a bank could not be able to, you know, put that package together. And that's my job, is to find out what's the missing piece, and then fill that with one of our partners or ourselves. So, but those are a couple of big ones. Sierra, everyone knows about the Sierra Pacific Industries mill or the expansion at their other mill in Chinese Camp as time has went on, so, you know, those are well-known ones. But probably filling existing holes, the two biggest ones that people would recognize would be those two, so.
I'll have some more questions as we go along.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Couple of things, Larry. One is just looking over the budget itself, line item down at the bottom part, 523-210, dues and memberships increased from 1,000 to 7,000?
Part of that, part of that goes into what we've done, is we've joined as partners, we have not before this time, joined as partners with the local chamber, two of the local chambers and the Visitors Bureau, and then actually one of those visitors, or one of the chambers in here, that we have a membership with them, which is about a $3,500 membership, we actually get back in rent. And so that's the Sonora Chamber of Commerce. They actually pay us rent to use our back office, which was an unused office space in our offices. So now we're getting used out of that back office space. And so that's, so that comes back into your income line up above, under the Musulanius. So basically, it's a wash when those two get done. We joined them as a major sponsor to them, but then what they do is they pay back to us in rent, so it's a zero-sum game. If we were to remove that, then they would not be able to afford to pay the rent, we'd have an empty office sitting in back. And the office, the offices where we have been at have been the same offices we've had since the day, or even the offices were picked before I even showed up, so. And so I'm trying to just get some use out of those spaces, so.
And the other, I understand the stuff about per is increasing, I understand that. 60% of the time was spent on the Central Sierra, and now that's going away. What I'm wondering is, why can't, if you have that extra 60%, or less than that, obviously, probably, why can't some marketing be done in-house instead of increasing the marketing budget three and a half, three and three-quarters full?
Because we already do that, but there's only so much you can do by mailing letters out, because stamps cost. You have to, you can't sell your community by just staying in the community, and so that's where...
I understand the part of marketing, I just, why can't you do some of the marketing, I guess, is what I...
Well, and...
Since you're going to be having that 60% taken away, or you're not going to have to do that.
I, that 60%, will be focused on attraction, but the cost of doing that attraction means I've got to be where the businesses are at. And so I've got to go visit the businesses after we've first contacted them by phone, by email, by site location consultants, whatever. I still need to visit with them one-on-one. I need to bring back them back here, show them buildings, show them locations, stuff like that. All of that has a cost and occurrence. I can do it on $10,000, but I'm not going to be able to bring that many people in. I can send a ton of letters out, send emails out, but I won't be able, I'll have the time to do it, I just won't have the money to do it. Because there's a two, there's a two-forked thing there.
Two-forked thing.
Well, there's staff time to be able to do those things, and then the cost of being able to do those things.
Right.
Like, like I said, you mail out a letter, you've got a stamp on that.
I guess what I'm saying, so this is something that hasn't been done in the past that all of a sudden we're doing now because of the Central Sierra going away?
Correct, because we, when you only have an attraction 5% to 10% of your time, you can do it for $10,000. Because really, you're doing a lot of letters, and I'm doing a few pitch events for young companies, young startup companies in San Francisco. I'm doing a few trade shows a year, mainly ones that I feel tied back in, those focused on biomass, those focused on natural products, things that we already have a foot into the area. And so this would simply expand those and get us into areas where we could grow. We have robotic manufacturers, we have high-end precision manufacturing going on in this community, and I believe we could attract more of that. And so, but going to see those, meeting with them, getting them the stuff, more brochures going out, more data going out to them, cost. In fact, we're not going to do it, but we recently, we constantly get contacts from companies who provide like economic data that you can plug into your website. One of them who's been hounding me for years is GIS Planning. Simply, an input into your website that provides all your demographic information is a $11,500 option every year. That would basically eliminate my entire budget, but you know what? We take our own time, we go and get the demographics ourselves, and we do all of our own demographics on our website, so. So that's where we do on attraction, so. And that data is also good for existing businesses, too. I don't want to, you know, always talk about attraction, so.
Okay, so I have two questions. Under employee, employee costs, the fiscal '18, is that number correct based upon the recent development with the board and your review? Does that include...
Oh, yeah. Yes, it does, yeah. It's required to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, no, um...
Since I sit on the EDA board, I just want to make sure the right number is in there.
Oh, yeah.
The other thing, Larry, is that even though the total dollar under FY '17 is correct, a line item is missing, and that's to do with car allowance.
With what?
Car allowance.
Right, that's actually plugged into that salary line item, so, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's been in and out, it depends on how they write the contract. With the most recent contract update, they pulled it out, so it will become its own line item. In prior contracts, they had it included in the compensation, and so because of that, it then went up into that line item. So depending on what the county auditor controller's office decides and how they interpret our contract, which we recently had a contract interpretation, that the car allowance and the cellphone reimbursements come out, so they're individual line items, so you'll see that in next year's budget.
So for a little while, I worked for CPA, and even though we did tax returns, we always added up the numbers ourselves on a tape calculator. So in that, if you add up everything under employee costs, it comes to $309,204 instead of the $315, so that may be something that you need to go back and relook at.
I'll confirm that, because I know these balances balance with the numbers that Debbie Patista's office provides for us, so I'll confirm that. But these are strictly directly from the payroll department within the county, so I'll reconfirm those, but I'm fairly certain those are spot-on.
That's why I thought there was a, that there was a line item that was missing to do with car loans.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's all that I have at this time. Oh, no, one more. And that is to do with the CD EDD contract revenues. TCEDA has received those revenues for 2017.
We have received those for, half of those for 2017. I'm holding back the second half because I don't know what our costs will be. We have not got the closure of that grant, and so as long as you don't have a closure, they can actually rake some of that back. So there could be, right now, I believe there's $30,000 sitting over there. I already know $5,000 of it is committed to match for the $250,000 grant that we did for the Butte Fire Recovery Center. And then there's also other expenses that have come in on that line item, but other than that, yes, as everything closes out and EDA says, yes, you crossed your Ts and you dotted your Is, there could be revenue there that would come forward, but we don't know that yet.
Or, or it may not come.
Oh, it may not, exactly. So, EDA may say we're raking everything back, so.
All right.
Sure, I'll be quick now, Mayor, you have Brett. Two, 309,204.
Thank you. All right, I will go ahead and open a public comment for anyone that would like to come up to the podium to address the council on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and fellow council members. My name is Frank Helm. Although our business is located, Dodger's Ski Area, located 32 miles from the City of Sonora, we feel that, you know, we're kind of one big county here, and we're all in this together. And I think we all recognize that Tuolumne County and the City of Sonora have benefited from Larry's leadership and along with the Economic Development Authority that two of the council members belong on, I think at this time, it's Mayor Williams and Mr. Segarini. And as Mr. Hawkins mentioned, that the Development Authority had voted seven to nothing to approve. And I just think it would be a tragedy to see a lot of this effort that has been put forth to diminish its efforts and not continue the benefits that have been provided. So I urge you to maintain the additional monies that are needed. The county has agreed to their increase, and I'm afraid that if the city doesn't follow through, that this, this whole effort could be, you can see it deteriorate pretty rapidly. So I, and also am a member of the Tuolumne County Business Council, and I don't know if any members other than myself are here tonight, but speaking on behalf of the Business Council, I know that our membership would also like to see the city continue with their fair share. So with that, thank you for the opportunity to comment. Any questions any of you might have, happy to answer. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, Sherry Brennan, District One Supervisor, and 2017 Tuolumne County Board Chair. So as you've heard, our board did unanimously approve the budget increase at our last meeting. Couple of points. I feel your pain. I think it's been widely reported that the county has a huge hole that we are trying to find answers to, and that that hole is going to be increasing over the next couple of years. of years. Um, the numbers are different, but our circumstances are similar. It was unanimous decision of our board that if we don't invest in EDA and what that retract, both, um, keeping businesses here, but increasing that attraction, we really are gonna have a harder time filling that hole. It's the reality. And we have to understand that our neighbors are aggressively doing the same thing that we're doing here. We have an individual, though, that I think we all recognize has tremendous energy and connections, and has brought, um, from my belief, um, an tremendous amount of economic activity to Topey County. So, um, I think it's important to recognize that, um, I give credit to my predecessors for having the foresight to develop this JPA. JPA was incredibly important, I think, both to the city and the county. And I think that you would give equal consideration and credit to your predecessors for having that foresight. But I think it's, it's now incumbent upon us to have the foresight to figure out how we move forward and continue to grow economic development, because without that, um, quite honestly, I'm not certain how we meet the challenges ahead of us. It's part of the answer, it's part of the solution, it's not part of the problem. And, so, um, I would really ask that you think about it in those terms. Uh, we don't have any departments that were, that we have seen those, or have anticipated growth adjustments for, except for EDA, because we look at EDA as something that actually brings that investment back to the county many times over. And so, I would suggest to you that with the current JPA, um, formation that we have, with roughly your twenty-five percent investment, you're leveraging much more, because the county has already committed to what is, basically, the equivalent of the seventy-five percent. When we look at the incentives that are produced from the additional variety of different tax increases, we don't see borders here. I, um, I firmly believe that a rising tide floats all boats. It'll float the county's boat, it'll float your board. But we need to be actively participating in this. And so, um, lastly, I would say that I personally campaigned on a platform that talked aggressively about bringing jobs to Topey County. I don't think there are any of us that sit on the county board, or irdias, that would say that we don't need to continue that effort, we need to do it aggressively, and that economic development is our best opportunity to do that. So I sincerely hope that you will consider this an investment, because I believe that's what it is. And again, if we're going to have any success at closing those gaps, we need economic development to be as strong as, as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sure.
The JPA agreement is seventy-five percent counting.
You know, and I tried to find that exact percentage out, George. I think that's basically what it is, yeah.
But the, uh, the, uh, the fact that if the city does not increase its contribution, then that would negate the county's offer to increase. Is that your understanding?
It would negate it, that is my understanding.
I may just comment real quick on the percentage. It's actually fixed on a percentage of sales tax and property tax. That is every few years looked at. Debbie Petista gives us those numbers, gives us our percentages, and it's a sliding scale. And so your current right now is seventy-seven, twenty-three. We tend to round them up and down, so the city's technically seven, or, uh, twenty-three, eighteen. We rounded that down to twenty-three, and the counties, uh, we rounded up the other way, so we got the hundred percent. And so we adjust that, um, every couple of years, as we get those updated numbers about, um, property tax and sales tax. So.
Any other questions? Thank you.
My name's Aaron Socia, represents here at Pacific Industries here in Topey County. I just wanted it to go, uh, and, and just put our, put our, put our word in on what economic development has done for us. Um, as you all know, I believe it was two thousand eight, it could be two thousand nine, uh, the, the, the mill shut down, and I believe that was the day that Larry started. And then since then, um, you know, the, the mill is back in operation. Uh, Larry's, not just Larry, but Topey County Economic Development has helped us pursue other projects as well, and add additional jobs into, into the, the several sawmills and, and facilities that we have here. And I just thought that we needed to, uh, to talk about that a little bit and say, um, you know, I don't, I don't know much about the budget. I read the paper too, obviously, it was off a little bit. Um, but I think we have an asset here, um, in, in Larry Cope, and with our economic development, we should be really happy to have that, and we should, we should take full advantage of it. And if, if it takes a li, a little bit of money, a little bit of a step increase, then I, I think that's something that we should look at doing. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Lindsay Brewer. I'm a representative from Sonora Regional Medical Center. I'm the Director of Marketing and Public Relations. And I just wanted to speak about how the hospital has worked with the Topey County of Economic Development Authority, um, when it comes to creating jobs for Topey County. Larry has been integral in his assistance, um, to reinvest in our community and make it a better place to work and live, and help us really to recruit new members to the community with new jobs for family members that we may be recruiting to the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Williams and city council members. Uh, my name's Dave Taney, and, uh, I'm here today wearing two hats. I'll start with, uh, my role as Executive Director for Motherlode Job Training. Um, Larry mentioned earlier that workforce development and, uh, economic development, uh, really go hand in hand. And, and workforce development is probably the biggest challenge that in economic development, is finding workers that can serve the, the employers. And so, uh, Larry and I, since I've had this job for about six months, we've gone out and tandem, uh, visited many businesses, and, and it's been a really powerful one-two punch, when we can talk to not only existing businesses here, but also, uh, prospects that we're trying to attract to the area, to show how there's a very supportive economic development and workforce development component in our community. And, uh, aside from the individual programs that we can offer and incentives, just, just having that, that, that great, uh, united front with business in this area has really proven beneficial to my agency. And, um, just as, we can't have economic development without a trained workforce, I can't really do the, the workforce development without some of the things Larry's working on very proactively, such as, um, uh, the infrastructure things like broadband and, and cellular reception, and, and, uh, affordable housing, and, and transportation, and those sorts of things. So, uh, we all work together as, as a unit, and, and I find, I consider him my, probably my primary partner in Topey County. We serve four counties, but, uh, in this county, he's my go-to partner. And it's really amazing how, um, earnest he is, and he just seems to be everywhere. He's omnipresent. And, and, uh, we, we have had so much, uh, opportunity to visit so many different businesses and, and engage with them, and, and it's just, would be a shame if I didn't have that partner available to me, uh, to, to, for me to be able to do my job and leverage what I do. The other hat I'm wearing tonight is, I'm also on, uh, the board of the Topey County Economic Development Authority, and he, uh, Larry is, uh, really remarkable in, in his role as an economic development expert. Uh, we're really lucky, I don't think many of us really know how lucky we are in this sort of little hamlet of Topey County and Sonora to have a world-class economic development person like Larry. I travel around other counties, I serve four counties, and I also go, uh, and visit other counties, and we have a world-class economic development, uh, entity and, 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 uh, spirit in Larry that just is, is amazing for, for our community, and we're very, very fortunate. And so, um, on that front, it, the fact that we asked Larry, or instructed Larry to step away from Central Sierra Economic Development District, wasn't that he wasn't doing a good job, he was doing a great job. And in fact, he resurrected that organization that was really on its, on its back with its legs up, it was dying, and he, and he brought it back to life, and not only that, but, but, but put it on a, on a solid footing. The reason we asked him to throttle back on that is he was too valuable to us. We, we were losing a world-class operative to, to other counties, and we wanted, we weren't getting our full benefit from him. Um, the, the last thing I, I wanted to add is, um, I think we're looking at things a little short-sighted, and I know you all have budget challenges, and I'm not here to, to tell you how to do your job, but other agent, other departments in the city, I think may be more of a cost or a service, service-related, uh, you know, cost, uh, center. But economic development's not a cost, it's an investment, and, and it's, it's a multi-fold. I mean, you can throw numbers out, um, and Larry's pretty careful not to do that, because numbers are easy to throw around. But when you're bringing in these large, uh, businesses from out of the area, and nurturing the businesses that are in the area, and, and creating job growth, that, that leverage and that multiplier effect is, is incredible, and, and it benefits us all. So, I would just urge you to think about, um, the investment in economic development, and the fifteen thousand dollars, I mean, I don't know what that is relative to your overall budget, but you'll, you'll get that back by two orders of magnitude minimum. So, um, uh, if there's any questions, that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Shirley Sarno, Sonora Chamber of Commerce, and also a consultant for SBDC. And I just wanna compliment Larry as far as the fact that anytime, I don't know how many times I've had people in, in some of the small merchants downtown, and with the Chamber, we deal with a lot of the small businesses who need a, a question or need help, and I can refer them to Larry, and he's been a great asset. With SBDC, he's been an amazing asset as far as supporting the, the, uh, Business Expo downtown, and helping with getting, um, the small businesses, the consulting that they can get through SBDC, at no cost to them. And just a great asset, a great partner, and has really been an asset for the Chamber, and I feel a great asset for downtown. And as you noticed, that there's more, there's less empty space now than there, where it was a lot before, and I think that Larry's had a lot to do with that. So I really appreciate everything he's done as far as the economic development of our city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Dave Carlberg. I'm co-founder of Kinematic Automation. Uh, we're a small manufacturing company here in the county that, we've been here thirty-seven years. We employ about fifty people. We're one of those companies that offers livable wages and, you know, has good jobs. And I would love to see more companies like mine, where it's clean manufacturing, there, there's no pollution, there's just good income coming into the, into the community. You know, the, the word sustainable is been thrown out as, to reason why the, the budget should not be, Larry's request for in, in, increased budget shouldn't be approved. And in my opinion, what's not sustainable is the mass exodus of, of young people out of our community. You know, we're losing talented, energetic young people in droves. Um, young families are moving away because they can't afford to live here. Our schools are shrinking. I would implore you to please consider adopting the budget that Larry's asked for.
Thank you.
I almost said good morning, and it comes back from working graveyard a few years, but good evening. Mike Iala, Topey County Chamber of Commerce, and many of us go back a long ways. Um, I'm thinking back to Hamgen when I first started really working with Larry, and then the last few years, Topey County Chamber of Commerce as Executive Director, and more currently as Government Affairs. And what that points out is the connection with the chambers that Larry has with us. It's both as a sponsor, and then he talked about the business alliance, and the training opportunities, and the resources, and the information that's provided to small businesses for that matter, large if they're interested and have the time, but small businesses that typically are struggling from month to month, day to day. And with that, you know, I just think, um, I think I heard the word investment, and I think that's really what you should look at in this request for the budget approval. It is an investment, both to keep the city of Sonora populated with good businesses, healthy businesses, strong. And when they do vacate, to find replacements that are good, healthy, vibrant, and strong. Um, we all are about jobs, the economy, economic vitality, but Larry lives it day to day. And, uh, I think with his resourcefulness, he's very strategic, he doesn't waste a penny. There's a lot of face-to-face time, but that's needed in this business. Without that face-to-face time, a letter, an envelope, an email just won't cut it very far, very long. And so I think with that effort, as I think you've heard, and I will bear that repeating, you will see that investment come back manyfold. And so I think with his resourcefulness, the marketing, the attraction, best benefit for your dollars, I would ask you to approve the requested budget increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Excuse me, my name is Ruann Mickelson, and I'm a resident here in Sonora, and been a resident of Topey County for fifteen years. Sonora, it'll be nine years. Um, wow, sounds like Larry's quite a hero. Um, I would like to thank the council for taking a second look at this. Um, I understand your budget woes, and I understand the counties as well. And I'm learning more and more about economic development in the twenty-first century. I currently work for an organization that does a lot of that work in the foothills, and also in the northern counties. Um, and I would just recommend, in this pause that you're taking, if you could just take another look, just maybe a little deep dive in what that return on investment is. Because it would be important to know how much we've gotten back, specifically, what we've gotten back for money that's been invested over the last nine years. It's a lot more money, having been invested in that JPA than, than, than what the county and the city had invested in before for that economic development function. So, that would be one recommendation.